Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would all rise and joining of the Plaid of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Okay, since Mr. Mayberry is absent today, I need to get a motion to excuse him if I could.
I'll move to excuse Director Mayberry from the meeting tonight.
Perfect.
Second.
Full roll call vote on that? Yes?
No.
No? All right. Perfect. Let it go. All right.
Oh, I thought we said last time we didn't have to. I don't know.
Well, there you go.
I think we should, just in case.
Well, then let's have a roll call vote, just for fun.
Gabe Galbraith.
Yes.
Micah Valentine.
Yes.
Diane Sundick.
Yes.
Mike Connors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay.
He is now excused.
He is now officially excused. Okay, this is where we usually have communications from parents, staff, and district residents, but we had no one sign up to speak tonight.
If you guys want me to, I will.
No.
I'm gonna go ahead. Math is great.
I do have good news. Could I?
Sure. Then share your good news. Do I need to go through the, all the operating agreement here we're gonna go through? Or it's gonna... All right, perfect.
No, I do have good news, which is that, because I'm hosting the high school Mathis School competition on October 25th, and of course, Kamaiakin will be there. For the first time ever, Southridge is bringing a team.
Wonderful.
I am ecstatic, relentless nagging. Does work.
It's working.
I actually think this is due to Ashwin Joshi, because I've been, you know, working on him for the last year, and, but so I nagged him, so I'm still gonna take the win.
Put him on the project.
Anyway, so I'm really looking forward to seeing Southridge.
Linda, what, where and what time?
It's at CBC, but it's the same night. You guys have a board meeting.
Okay.
But the awards are like, at around 8:00 PM, if you wrap up early.
Wonderful. That is good news. Do we have anyone online that was going to speak this evening? Nobody online. Perfect. All right, we're moving on, on to consent items.
Move to approve the consent calendar, consent items as written. A second.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith.
I abstain.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Diane Sundick.
Yes.
And Mr. Connors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Look at us go. I love it. Okay, next up is the superintendent and board member reports. Dr. Pierce, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share, you know, the board may have seen the paper today that showed that we have five staff members from Desert Hills Middle School being honored today with the Washington State Governor's Life Saving Award for saving the life of a student last year. As a district, we honored this group, parent educator Courtney Bissinger, teacher Curtis Clausen, security officer Ken Latin, coach and counselor Ben Schultheis, and PE teacher Sean Suss, with the first-ever Heart of KSD Award at our annual August Welcome Back Staff Assembly. And the reason for the honors, last year, these five individuals, through their quick thinking and rapid response, they saved the life of a seventh-grade student at Desert Hills. He had experienced a seizure in PE, and his heart stopped. They tended to the student as a group, they called the ambulance, an AED was used, they provided chest compressions, all the right steps and moves to save the student's life, and within the span of 12 minutes, the student's heart began beating again, and he was en route to the hospital. So, we were really honored to honor them in August and show our appreciation for truly, you know, going above and beyond for the life of a student. And today, they're being honored at the opening ceremony of the Governor's Industrial Safety and Health Conference in Spokane. And so, in case you didn't see the paper today, I wanted to make sure that you are aware of this Governor's Award that the team is receiving today. Allison.
Can I add a little something to that? At UW or wherever, whichever Harborview, whichever hospital was, they said that the AED was the thing, the take that came from that was the thing that allowed them to diagnose what had happened to him and to provide the accurate treatment. So I know our staff did a lot of work, like driving things around, getting that to them too. So I wanna thank those people for adding. It just shows you AEDs are great.
Thank you. Welcome. You ready to go? Perfect. Do that for us.
So we did not have a student advisory council since the last board meeting. Of the last board meeting, unfortunately, I just caught a bit off guard with my presentation. So I feel like I missed a couple of things that I would wanna share, so I'm just gonna reshare some things from the last meeting, which was September 13th. I did a few things I'll repeat. Like I said, we were going over topics that we wanna discuss the most this year in the student council. The two most answered topics would be safety and communication. Something I wanted to add on to safety was, Southridge last year implemented this new system in their school, which is, they just call it See Something, Say Something, and they put up QR codes around their school, and it leads to some kind of form, possibly like a Google form, where students can choose to be anonymous or say their name and report anything, anything negative or positive. Although, the students in the council who are from Southridge said that it's had a good effect on them in the school. Also, other Southridge students that I've reached out to said that has a good effect on the school. So I'm really interested to talk to staff and possibly security at Southridge and see what they think of it, and then to see if we can get implemented into other schools, especially high schools. So that's something I wanna work on and that I thought was important to share. And then just with communication, like I said, that was one that some students said that they wanted to work on this year, mostly with TRITech and CBC students and how they feel like they're not getting information out to them as well as they can be through, whether it be like counselors or just any information through their high school, they're not getting it to them very well. So that's something that we'll be working on. Yeah, this is mostly the See Something, Say Something that I'm interested in working on, that I wanna share.
So not really quick on the, getting the information to the CBC students and TRITech. So are they not, are they not receiving this information via their school email, or what, I guess, what, where's that gap?
So just because full-time students are in school full-time, obviously. They just have a lot more opportunities through mostly their teachers to get this information. So there's that cut off, because they're just not at school all the time. So it's trying to figure out like, unique, just out-of-the-box ways that we can get information to them. Unfortunately, a lot of students do not check their email, even though we remind them to. But, so, you know, we can remind them as much as we can, but there's, we're looking into other ways to get information to them. So.
Thank you very much.
My turn? Yeah, I do. So I had a meeting with a principal to discuss Tier Two program and learn more about that, and it was an eye-opening meeting, and I have a follow-up with Dr. Pierce and Lexi, I believe, this Friday to discuss more about Tier Two, Tier Three. One of the discussion pieces in our, in the meeting I had with the principal was talking about isolation and restraint, and, you know, there, I can't remember if there was a law that was passed, or they tried to pass a law that eliminated isolation and restraint, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we had a good discussion around that. And then spent, what was it, Friday and Saturday throughout the day on WASDA's conference, listening in as a, as a, not a delegate, but just as a guest. And so, I did, I did wanna ask, though, how we, how we voted on our positions, because I was a little surprised to see that we had a couple votes that, that looked like they support removing isolation in our schools. And so I, I know I don't support that, and I think Micah mentioned he didn't support that, and so I just didn't know if a majority of the board supported otherwise, or that was something that, I'm just kinda curious how we, we voted, because I believe it's physical crisis intervention. We voted for supporting WASDA in legislation that would prevent study, students from experiencing unnecessary or unreasonable restraint, restraint devices, isolation, and other crisis. This position allows WASDA to advocate strongly for the elimination of isolation and emergency use restraint. So I was just, I was curious how we came to our vote of supporting that versus not Did we have a board?
Yeah, so that's a, well, then, Gabe, you and I spoke about it yesterday, so, again, I was sicker than a dog here the last two weeks.
Right.
So I did not fill out that, my WASDA paperwork.
You were the only two I got it from. I got yours and yours and a copy of his, a ditto of his.
Yeah.
That was all, that was received.
So then if we, so then if Mike and I didn't support it, how did we, why did we vote for it?
And out of the 48 things, it took however long when we did it, I'm not remembering exactly, you know, vote. I mean, you're telling me one, but I've not looked at that. And we were supposed to receive that yesterday, the whole thing, which has not come out as of, I don't know, 3:30 this afternoon yet.
Yeah, 'cause there, as a matter of fact, 'cause I know Mike and I submitted stuff, and there's actually 12 votes on there that are different than what we submitted, so I wasn't sure if, if it was like a majority thing, or if it was...
There really was no majority, 'cause we had, we had five boards. So like I said, I, you know, haven't looked at the numbers, so I'm not saying we're not accurate.
Yeah, just two, two of us submitted stuff, and out of three, that seems like a majority. So I just was curious, 'cause there's a lot on here that I don't...
Well, what's supposed to happen, and that hasn't been done in the past, is those come out in August, and the board should be meeting and talking about that in work-study sessions every, some boards do it every board meeting, or they have separate ones. So that information is all there, and I remember you were gonna put together a thing, and so we didn't get that. And so that information would have given us that, except we didn't have that. So, you know, for next year, you'll want to...
Right, but how did we, how did we vote this year then? So did you select all the votes based on what you were thinking, or was it based on what the board has discussed?
A lot of it.
'Cause like I said, Mike and I both submitted answers, and we, like, we didn't support this one, but we voted yes as a district that we supported it.
We voted yes as a district?
Yes. I reviewed all, I went through and checked the results.
Oh, I thought you meant like, previous.
So I'm just, I'm just curious, if three of us submitted stuff, two of us wanted certain responses, they weren't that way, so I'm just curious how we voted.
I don't know. And that's something I just have to look at, we can discuss later.
Okay. So I, I think we should put it on the next agenda item, so we can discuss this more in detail, 'cause like I said, if we, we have all these, and basically, I basically feel at this point, like, what I did for the work and submitted it wasn't even factored into our decision to make votes as a board, so it seems to me like I'm just, I wasted my time in submitting that.
If we'd had all five, and we could have discussed it. Excuse me, I am so sorry. Finishing the end of a call. If we could have finished and gotten all that information and have that there, that would have certainly provided more information, right?
Yeah.
To help me get that there.
But now, but again, though, we're on record now on all these positions that we, that we apparently didn't decide as a majority of the board, so these are all you selecting these positions versus the majority of the board, which it should be. That's what I'm trying to understand. So, 'cause if we didn't have a majority of the board, we probably shouldn't have voted. Okay, so, per WASDA, our votes were, were, it sounds like they were Ms. Sundick's votes and not, not the Kent School Board majority votes, just for the record?
Except for there wasn't a majority of the board that gave it.
Two of, two of the three board members submitted information to vote, so two of three is 66%. That's, that's majority, so. And Ron Mayberry abstained because of conflict of interest, so.
Two of them.
Okay, well then, we shouldn't have voted. We shouldn't have had your opinions make our stances at WASDA, because these things on here...
Every vote I made was a personal opinion and not based on what we do in our district.
I mean, I, there's, I got 12 votes that I went through that...
Out of 48?
Yeah.
I mean, 12 out of 48.
Yeah, 'cause I agreed with the other, I agreed with the other ones, yeah. That's what I sent you. But there's, there's 12 that you just voted, apparently on your own stance versus what we submitted.
That's just your personal opinion.
Okay. So next year, we'll have to put something in, in line, that way we can ensure that the board majority gets to make these votes and these positions.
And if you start in August, and if you meet and you do that...
We'll discuss that with the, we'll discuss that with the new board.
Well, don't, please. Then if you do that in August and you meet, as would be the case, and you heard people say that, they've been meeting since August, then that will provide the person with that information.
Yep.
Also, right?
Yep.
And I also didn't see any texts from you in, during the meeting. You could have contacted me during the meeting about things. So, 'cause I did look, I didn't see that either, so.
I emailed you before the meeting, so did Micah.
Right.
You had what we were expecting.
But I mean, during the meeting, you could have asked me.
Okay. You could vote as a majority of the board next time and not your own personal stuff. Thank you. You can go. I won't get anywhere with this.
All right. Micah, what have you got?
All right. Back, jumping back to Mallor's comments, students don't check their emails. This is just a question to think about. Is there another way to communicate with students? Social media, text messaging, that they will, you know, I don't know how many, you know, some students have phones, some don't, but some, most of them will be on social media. So if there's a way we can think about, can we hit besides just strictly email, 'cause I agree with you that kids do not do that. I also went on, I was also on the WASDA conference, watched all that. I think that the really good vote that happened was, we, as a board collectively voted on a weighted vote, and we, we got that. So that was, to not have the way to vote, so that's great. I met with John Griffin, the new Southridge principal, this, this week. He's, he's, he's great. He's gonna do a really good job. I think he's got a good, good frame of mind. Loved watching all the high school games and stuff. It's, it's one of my favorite times of year to watch, to watch our teams do well. Visited Foressa Elementary with my beautiful bride. It was fun going to the school. I also organized a day of service with them, and I got several community members going out there, and we cleaned up a bunch of, bunch of stuff, and that was kinda neat on a Saturday morning, the 16th. Several phone calls with staff, with teachers, things like that. Visited Park Middle School as well. So yeah, busy, always, you know, busy couple weeks.
Thank you. Van?
Two days at WASDA, and some of the ones I thought that were, we changed some language and got rid of some old language that didn't need to be there anymore, but amplify staff funding levels, and there was a lot of debate on that, which essentially, it failed because there were some amendments to amendments to amendments that I was telling Dr. Pierce about, which was interesting, that kinda took the meat out of what boards are, are asking the legislature to do. And it's, you know, a belief statement is good, but we also need to really support the legislator fully funding, legislator, excuse me, fully funding. And so I think that remained a very strong stance. Assess valuation by basis for our receiving funding, so a lot of people are getting different assessments, and that's changed in our area a lot, when people got extra assessments. And so there's some interest in the state legislature about trying to help even that out, because there are areas where assessments have gone down, and districts are losing tons of money. And so that was a, a good one. One of the ones, a parent actually had called me a month ago about this pedestrian and bicycle safety areas for our kids walking to school, and I know we talked about that at Highlands, so crosswalks, sidewalks, different busing types of things that we can do. And then we did do the one, one board, one vote, which is something that had only started in 1984, and nobody really remembered why that started, and so that has gone away. So every vote, or every board, no matter the size of your district, or if you're very small, of eight, as in Star, you get your one vote. So that was a long discussion, but actually finally passed, so that was a good thing. And I was thinking, oh, a lot of discussion about local control, and went back and forth, back and forth, and they didn't pass any particular language on that, but it's coming back, we'll come back next year for a lot more discussion, and it's going to come in.
We also voted not to have local control, is that correct?
It, the, it failed. That was one of the ones that had amendments to amendments to amendments, and I think that it got so convoluted that there was not understanding. And so that's one of the ones that's, it called for the question, and then it failed, and they're going to send that reconsidering that.
Also, did you remember how our, how we voted? No?
Out of 48?
No. I think that was one that we voted against it as well.
I really don't have anything to, much to bring up here. Being so damn sick the last two weeks, it's been hard to do much anything, but it's, the one thing I will say, specifically going back to school, both my kids are, that are still in school in the KSD, are going to TRITech. And seeing these kids come home at the end of the day, they're enthused, they, they absolutely love it. So I've got one doing automotive, one doing the nursing, and they just come home with a smile on their face, and they're telling me all the cool things they're doing, and, I mean, I've gotta keep my son from tearing my pickup apart, he keeps going out there. "Dad, I wanna work on your truck." I'm like, "No, you're not. You've been in school for three weeks, dude, you know nothing."
To my house. I guess it worked.
Yeah, but he, but he is absolutely thrilled. He loves his teachers, he, I mean, he just can't wait to go in there and do stuff. And so for me, as a parent, that is like the coolest thing to see my kids come home and be enthused. Now again, and they're, they're taking good class load, but that hands-on learning a skill, I think, is just so cool. And they just, they absolutely, they love it. My daughter in the nursing program just, or the, the, the CNA.
Yeah.
Again, she is just thrilled and wants to go, wants to be a nurse, and so again, just, just seeing them love something so much is just, is just the best. So as a parent, that is the coolest thing. And then circling back to the WASDA deal, I think that the one thing we, I think we missed this year, is in years past, we have had, you know, we've sat down and had their, the list, you know, again in August, you know, July, August, where we've sat down and we've ranked all of our stuff. And I remember that, 'cause I, given the list of 300 things, whatever it is, I'm like, "Oh my God, I've gotta go, go try and rank all this stuff." We, somehow we missed that this year, and so we've gotta make sure that, going forward, that we absolutely sit down, we have, to everyone's point, we sit down, we know what we're doing, we have that go-forward plan, so we have it all listed out. And again, I absolutely, you know, admit that I did not fill it out, again, just...
And you can agenda that for September. That could be one of your first meetings in September.
Yeah, I think, I think we absolutely need to make sure that going forward, that we have, we filled that out. However, 'cause Gabe did send out that spreadsheet, and I remember looking at it, and I thought it was very well, it simplified it for me to look at. And again, but again, I was on too many drugs there to fill anything out, so I put it away and then forgot. But anyway, it, it was a very well-thought-out sheet that I thought would help us go forward. But we need to make sure going forward that we do have that on our agenda, so we are well-prepared, everyone, you know.
It usually comes out by the 25th of August. I think that...
Did anybody see it this year?
It, it was not sent to individual boards. You had to go to the WASDA website, and there was not, there, I'm not sure what happened. There was a breakdown, because usually it's sent out to the boards, and that's why I ask if maybe Patty received it, because I don't. And when I went back and looked on, I had to go on to their regular website, it came out on the 23rd of August this year. But I'm not sure where things change.
Yeah, so, something got wonky this year.
But I would just agenda it for the, your first, well, it would probably be your first meeting. It would have to be.
So I'll amend the board calendar to put it on August. To add it, item to August.
Depends on when, it depends on when the August meeting is, because if it doesn't come out till like the 25th-ish, I'm not sure when your meeting would be, because it would have to, you know, you'd have to know by your first or maybe second meeting, depending on the date. It was, and you're, you're confused about the date, because, and so is on, because it's usually, the way the week falls, it would usually be a few days later. And so that, depending on when that will be next year, when annual conference, or general assembly, excuse me, will be next year.
And Dr. Pierce, I'd like to add to that, I'd like to have, like you, like you involved, Vic, 'cause there's like funding questions that I'd like to have, like, an expert that I can ask and get clarifying questions, 'cause when you read some of that stuff, you're like, "I'm, I'm not 100% sure," but if we could collect, if we could collectively do that with some of the subject matter experts too involved, would help, I think collectively understand what's, what's on there.
A lot of what will be on there next year will be dependent on what the legislature does this year, so there may not be as many money things this year, 'cause this was the shorter session, so every other year, there would be more financial things. So it's hard to know until the legislature makes their information.
I'll add it to the calendar. I'm thinking maybe, like, because the board meeting, I think, is earlier in August typically, but there could be a study session later in August for this purpose solely.
Or added, oh yeah, or added to the first, or first meeting in September.
Or you do a study session before the first one, depending on...
Yeah, I was trying to reflect on, I feel like last year, it was a lot of push information coming to board members and superintendents. And I, nothing came out this year that I recall, so it's just strange, because I, I don't know.
And WASDA's gotta figure out a better way to do this, because when you get to the second day, and you only have 90 schools online voting out of 300 districts, like, you've got a... So the weighted vote had about 140, 150 districts represented. After that, they started dropping off, and by the second day, like, there was less than 100 districts even involved, and so they've gotta figure out a way to get more districts involved.
Part of the problem was that, even though we, that was the most districts they were seeing that they'd ever had, usually by the end of the first day, like, there were 48 this year, which was a really short amount, we would have been last year at like 43, because we came back for, I think it was an hour and a half on Saturday last year, and it was about the same thing the year before that. So I think there was just an overload and a stress for a lot of people too, from that first two-hour thing.
A six-hour discussion on weighted voting, and every Westside school throwing every call to order an amendment, and this, that, and the other they can.
It was only two and a half, but it seemed like six. They were the long ones, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, uh, let's move on here. We've got reports and discussions. First up, we have our family parent involvement and engagement efforts. So we have, Robyn Chastain and Melissa St. Helera are going to be presenting. Are you guys presenting both the first one and the second one? It's kind of a...
I think that one is more of a discussion.
Oh, okay.
It's more, no one asked for that to be put on the agenda, and we really need more information from it.
Okay.
Before we know what to do. So, I can talk a little bit. I think I minimized it.
Oh, thank you.
I've tried to.
Mrs. St. Helera and I are here to present our family involvement engagement efforts to the school board. So as you know, our strategic goal around all families as key partners has an annual objective to, to ensuring, I'm looking right at it here. Engaging and helping our families be partners in their students' education, and so students can be successful. So our presentation tonight, we're gonna cover the 2023 Annual Family Survey, including our spring 2023 results, and identify strengths and opportunities... including our spring two thousand twenty-three results and identify strengths and opportunities that were a result of the annual family survey. Also, our family education engagement efforts, our action team for partnerships, our A T Ps as we like to call them, and our family and community education update. That includes the Get to Know K S D that you learned about more at your last meeting, and then opportunities for family involvement, as well as family-friendly access to processes, procedures and forms, including communication plans and language access plans. And then also included in this presentation that the board is able to see is the family survey data from last spring. So annual family survey highlights for the spring two thousand twenty-three. So we had three thousand one hundred and seventy-two responses. Out of those, twenty-five hundred and sixty-three were in English.
Wow, that's last year's data.
Oh, sorry. That would be last year's data, so a year, two years ago. And then this year, we had twenty-one hundred and fifty-four responses. Out of those, we had eighteen hundred and thirty completed surveys. And we also received responses in Spanish and Arabic. So one area was the school staff. This is where our families would rate basically, grade our staff on building positive relationships with them. And so eighty percent of our families were in agreement with, that they're, they felt like they have positive relationships with their school. And then we also had sixty-nine percent in agreement that they have a good working relationship with school staff in which they solve problems working together. And then another data point was school staff members listen if they have questions and concerns. And eighty-three percent of our families that responded to the survey were in agreement with that statement. And then another survey question was, when I visit my child's school, I feel welcomed. And we had eighty-six percent of our families that responded in agreement with that statement. And when I say agree, strongly agree or agree. And then there was the question, I am invited to participate in events, either virtual or in-person about student learning. For example, open houses, new family orientations, back-to-school events and letter C and math events. And eighty-seven percent either strongly agreed or agreed. I receive or I am able to access, for example, in Power School, information on a regular basis about my child's progress. And we had eighty-six percent of our families in agreement. I've been provided with information or instructions with how to access my child's information on Power School. Seventy-eight percent were in agreement. School staff members regularly communicate with me. For example, through communication notebooks, letters, postcards, emails, phone calls, texts, website or newsletters. Seventy-two percent of families were in agreement with this statement. I'm providing clear information as well as opportunities to learn and provide input about school policies, programs and improvement efforts. Sixty-five percent of families were in agreement with this statement. I'm provided useful information about how to support my child's learning. Sixty-eight percent of families were in agreement with this information or with this statement. I have a good understanding of the academic content and skills my child is learning at school. Sixty-eight percent were in agreement. And school staff consult me before making important decision about my, decisions about my child's education. And we had sixty-one percent of families in agreement. And I almost skipped the last one. Information from my child's school is provided in the language that my family speaks at home. Ninety-six percent of the families that responded were in agreement.
Can I ask a question, Robyn? So do we have feedback from some of these questions? Like, were people able to put comments in and say X, Y and Z? Like, we have, you know, sixty-one percent agree that school staff consults me before making important decisions about my child's education. Like, what are they, what are they referring to? Do we know? Is that like?
So we don't have an open-ended answer after each question, but we do have one at the end of the survey where a lot of people touch on different areas where they felt, had strong feelings about. So we're able to pass those, the responses to the open-ended questions along to the schools so they can look at specific situations or specific practices that are in place and change course or respond. In some cases, they can actually touch base with the respondents in the survey if they provide their information.
Is that, is that enough? Like, I'm wondering, so like, on this, the school staff one, it's on my screen, somebody used it. So that's almost five hundred people disagree or strongly disagree. I, I'm guessing we don't have more than a handful of responses as to why people disagreed on that one. So how do we capture that, the rest of that sentiment so we can improve that, that one? If we're, if we're only getting a handful of responses, feedback, like we have no clue what they're referring to?
That is the challenge with surveys, right? Is the specifics on what, what did, you know, people interpret even questions differently? Like we find out with our students, interpret questions differently. We haven't talked about a way to capture more input, but that's definitely something we can pursue moving forward into the next family survey. I think that's a great idea.
Are these, are these anonymous surveys? Or do people put their information in?
It doesn't ask for that your personal information's not required.
Okay.
But there is some situations where, you know, maybe a parent didn't get around to calling the principal about a situation that they have a concern about, or they have more input, or they want to volunteer in. So they might have identified an issue or a problem with the school. And then they'll offer their contact information to help volunteer in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our strengths and opportunities lie in the responses to these questions. So, or statements. So eighty, eighty percent or more in agreement, those are areas of our strength and strengths. So that would be school staff building positive relationships. We have definitely, have indication that people are feeling like this is a strength in our school. And school staff members listen if they have questions and concerns. And when they visit their child's school, they feel welcomed. So that's eighty-six percent. I am invited to participate in events. That's eighty-seven percent. I receive or I'm able to access information on a regular basis, basis about my child's progress, eighty-six percent. And information from my child's school is provided in language that my family speaks at home, ninety-six percent. So those are strengths. Now where the opportunities lie? It would be in areas with less than eighty percent agreement. So those areas include, I have a good working relationship with the school staff in which we solve problems together. I've been provided with information or instructions on how to access my child's information in Power School. School staff members regularly communicate with me. I'm provided clear information as well as opportunities to learn and provide input about our school policies, programs and improvement efforts. And I'm provided useful information about how to support my child's learning. I have a good understanding of the academic content and skills my child is learning about at school. And that school staff consult me before making those important decisions about my child's education. So one thing to note here is that this information is also, as we know, broken out by school. And that helps our schools build their school improvement plans and identify areas of communication. So family engagement efforts.
Hold on, hold on, real quick. So again, so, so I, Robyn, thank you for that information. So a quick question to your point. So now that we have our opportunities, so how are we going to go forward with this and start implementing this, these remedies here to hopefully address this?
Melissa has all the answers to all our problems.
So I was actually going to address that a little bit. I think now that we've got, you know, this high-level data, as Robyn said, yes, we want the schools to be looking at the school-level data, but we are also looking at the district-level data to help inform, you know, what we want to continue doing and what we, what we need to look into. And some of it is going to require trying to understand a little bit more, to your point, about what is meant by that. So we don't yet have our new community and family education person identified. You did, you did hear last time, as Robyn said, what our plan is for Get to Know K S D, which through some of the sessions, like I have a good understanding of academic content. If you remember, two of those sessions are going to be focused on, how do I help my student in reading? How do I help my student in math? So those are opportunities for us to educate about, this is what your student should be learning in reading and math, and here's how you can help, right? So we're using this data to help inform those, those efforts on Get to Know K S D. We're using it to help inform what that position focus can be on family education and engagement. You know, could be, once we get the person hired, doing some focus groups. Because as Robyn said, a survey is only, a survey is like the first level of information and it helps you know and points you in a direction of where you can dig deeper. And that, a lot of times involves talking to people in a group to help understand kind of what's behind this, right? So there's, there's lots of avenues we can take with this. And then, of course, Alyssa's going to be talking about the family engagement team and some of their work with A T Ps. So lots of different avenues, but the one piece that we don't have yet is the, the person hired to do the community and family engagement. And I'm probably stealing a little bit of the presentation, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
How many years do we have this survey data going back?
Three.
We have three years worth of data on this. Is it, is it possible to, like, do we have this slide from last year's presentation that we can look and see if? Like, I'm curious if the last three years have been the same opportunities or not, or same strengths?
We can follow up with that.
I'm just curious, like, the trend for the three years, if it's the same year over year? And I can dig through it all.
No, we can. We prepare.
Data mining.
Be helpful for us too.
I'm going to continue and talk a little bit about some of our structures we have in place for family engagement. We have a team, we call it the Student Family Support Team that supports schools. Family engagement doesn't just happen. It's by design. And we have some supports to help schools with family engagement practices. This team helps plan practices around academics, social emotional learning and also partnerships. So I just quickly made a slide. If you've heard the term A T P, or if you've been to any of the A T P events, Action Team for Partnerships, this, these are Kennewick's family engagement efforts. And examples that you have probably gone to are reading nights, math nights. These are teams of teachers. We want families involved in these teams as well. We recruit and we want families to be part of this planning, to put on STEM nights. Some of our schools have dinners for winners right before state prep, state testing time to just give some tips to help kids go to bed on time, get a good breakfast. Last week, Kamikin at their open house held a Power School clinic to help the families with Power School make sure they had their logins. Some examples of social emotional learning that has taken place with our family engagement. Kamikin has done brave talks with a focus on mental health for the last couple of years. Cascade Elementary had a learner profile night. A lot of schools will send home positive postcards. It's not always about an event. It's about a practice. And so sending home, making positive phone calls and making that a routine. Some of our schools have gone to greet families before school starts that some have called it the welcome wagon, just welcoming families to the school. And then I'm going to show you pictures. We had one school last year host a sensory-friendly event for their school. So they opened about a half hour, hour early. Didn't have any music. They just had made sure there was less stimulus and had a sensory-friendly event that a family could go to and participate. Some of the partnerships that are created on these teams are culture nights. Hidden in plain sight is presented at schools. If you haven't seen that presentation, it's really powerful. Internet safety is another example. And we keep a running tally of community resources and get those out to our A T Ps so they can have resource fairs with open house, conferences. So those are some examples, but I always think the pictures are better. So I do have some pictures of some of our events. These are from an end-of-the-year activity where schools share a practice they're, they want to be duplicated in other schools. So we've got an example here from Edison, Kennewick High School. Chinook had a big art night this last year. That was a big hit. Edison had a family night. Westgate has a really big culture night. And then there's a picture of the sensory-friendly bingo at Cascade. So those are some current things happening. To the board's point, these teams will be looking at those surveys by school as well. And they make a plan for the whole year, looking at that data as well because they want to help strengthen that going ahead. Okay, I think Robyn has some updates on community education.
Sorry, are those plans available?
Yeah.
Like, can I go to a webpage and look at them?
They are on schools' school improvement plans. They are a whole page and those will be coming to the board in a few weeks.
Okay, and so, so K S D schools, school improvement plans? And then I can find my local school and see what they're working on, what their plan is?
Yes. And if you see the acronym FACE, FACE stands for family and community engagement.
Okay, okay, awesome. Thank you.
Community and family education update. Tracy already updated you, so that was my presentation. So we talked about the last meeting, launching the Family Hub, and we've started to kind of reorganize that. We also launched an e-newsletter called Family Hub, which provides families with news and tools. And so hopefully you saw that come out this last week. So part of our efforts also is to hire a community and family education coordinator and relaunch the community education program. That's, that's still very much a goal of ours. However, hiring somebody has proven to be a challenge just with the job qualifications and the scope of work. So it's just a tough hiring market right now. And then we also hope to expand the community education program to include that family-focused education for parents and guardians. And we're going to definitely get started with that work, even though we don't have the coordinator in place for the whole program yet.
I'm going to spend a couple of minutes on how we're trying to be more family-friendly and making sure our families have access. I'm going to focus a little bit on language access. We've got some work this year that we're doing to make sure all families are receiving information that they can understand. So just to give the board a little bit of context, we have over three thousand students who speak another language at home other than English and are learning to be proficient in English. We have a lot more than three thousand that speak another language at home. Spanish is our second most popular language. That's the purple here of those three thousand languages. And then we, Arabic is another one. Korean, Burmese, Ukrainian, Russian are, are other ones, but it's, it just is a lot smaller. So we do focus a lot. I'm going to talk about supports for Spanish and then other languages in a couple of slides. One way we like to gather feedback sometimes in Spanish and Arabic is not through a survey. So those surveys are one great measure, but you hear the term multiple measures sometimes in presentations. And we get a lot better feedback when it doesn't have to be filled out in a survey sometimes. So I have a picture here of breakfast with the migrant graduation specialists. We have eleven migrant graduation specialists at different schools in Kennewick. And we had probably about eighty parents here on March fourteenth for breakfast. And at each table was one of our Kennewick staff and they were taking notes. How do you feel welcome? Who welcomes you? When have you not felt welcome? So we took the survey and we made it a conversation. So that, this kind of feedback doesn't show up in the survey data, but we do gather it and we share it with schools because we want to make sure all families feel safe, known and valued in our schools. And we get great turnouts. Our secret is phone calls, childcare and food. And we get wonderful turnout at events like this. events like this. Some other ways, just for context for the board, we've increased our Spanish interpretation. We have three full-time translators, interpreters for the district, one entirely for special education. And then we have two supporting staff. That's for different written documents, as well as at conferences or events. We are training staff to use the Parent Square translating tool. So a parent can write in English, and if the settings are correct, a family can receive the communication, not perfect, but pretty darn good, in Spanish, Arabic, or whatever language they have selected in Parent Square. We have part-time language liaisons who speak Somali, Korean, Russian, Ukrainian. And we, they're kind of on-call for us. So we work with those. They're, they're usually leaders in communities who know a lot of people, and they will help us when we need to communicate some messages in languages other than Spanish. We're always working to increase bilingual staff at buildings. We think the more bilingual staff at the building, that first line when families come in, so they don't have to make a phone call or anything, is much more welcoming and can really alleviate stress in a situation. And then we are translating more and more documents and seeing more English-Spanish documents go out. And we want to get better at it as well. So one way of being more family-friendly is making sure our families can understand the materials that are going out and when communication's coming in, that it's, I'm not sure. I think we've got some, the appendix is full of staff survey data, but I think we're ready to open it for questions, comments?
Okay.
Good question. You're just curious, do we know why we had such a reduction in responses at all?
Yeah.
From the survey?
We had a pretty aggressive phone calling campaign in 2022. And we, that family-student support team, along with some migrant bilingual staff, called for a couple weeks, and they put the survey results in. And this year, 2023, we, we did do some, but we didn't have quite the same amount of time to do it.
Okay, okay. So is that something we can look forward? Can we try and increase that again this year?
Absolutely.
See if we can't get better, better turnout. Because obviously, the, the numbers prove that that vigorous outreach on our part seems to help.
Yes. Yep.
Perfect. Any other questions?
I just have a question. I'm curious if the board has any input one way or the other. But we added a "not sure." So when we do the three-year trend, it's going to be a little funky, because for the first, I think in the first year, I'm trying to remember now, we had a five-point scale, and it was like a neutral. And then we moved to all of our surveys having a four-point scale. And then, based on input from the family engagement team, because sometimes people don't know how to answer, we wanted to provide the "not sure" option, which skews the data a little bit. Moving forward into next year, do you have thoughts about providing that "not sure" option? Yes or no?
I personally have never been a fan of having a neutral or "not sure." To me, it's kind of a dump, dump into box if, you know. Yeah. I mean, either, it's kind of like you agree with, to the questioner, you, you don't. I would hope you'd have an opinion, but I'm not a fan of "neutral" or "not sure." It's just me personally.
And I heard Alyssa said forced, you know, these are forced answers, and a "not sure" is no answer.
Right. And I say forced, meaning you have to make a decision.
Right. Yeah, it's forced, forced decision-making. But so a "not sure" is no decision. It kind of dilutes your information. It does, it does dilute it.
And I'm trying to remember, could people skip a question?
Yes. It's not, the questions aren't required to answer. And it wasn't the feedback, like the open-ended, that people, they, they
Understand it.
They didn't under, yeah, they, they would have responded "not sure" if there was an option, but they didn't. Yeah, they just skipped questions because...
I'd almost rather have them skip a question than put a "not sure," because at least once, if they skip the question, it doesn't skew your, your data as much. You just don't get as much, your responses will be different per question based on who skips them, but...
That's, and that's what I was going to say, is that if, if, if we're going to take that "not sure" or "neutral" away, we have to make very clear that if you don't, you don't know, please don't answer, but answer the ones you feel comfortable answering, or something along that line.
Okay.
Just because otherwise, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to discourage anyone from taking or stopping halfway through.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Wonderful. Thank you both. Okay, next up. What's it?
I can.
Yep. So I'm going to have Dr. Pierce talk to us about, think about radio frequency identification badges for students, RFID.
So if the board recalls this item was asked, Mr. Mayberry asked this item to be put on the agenda, and we, it wasn't discussed at all at the last meeting. And in talking about it a little bit with Ron Cohn, we thought probably the best next step is to have the board surface their questions, or what discussion you want to have. So then we know if you want us to investigate something, if you want us to do some research. We weren't 100% sure where to go and wanted to make sure we were heading in the direction that you were wanting. But I'm not sure, since Ron is not here tonight, if you want to talk about this tonight, or if you want to move it to the next time when Ron is here.
Can we start talking and then?
We do, whatever you want.
Because
I'm okay with table on it, because I know that...
I'm just not even sure where we're going with it without Ron putting some, I guess, more context to it.
It seems like it was Ron's thing.
It was interesting, because the kids, I wish I could remember if it's Hanford High or Richland High. I think it's Richland. The kids at Richland, you were talking about safety, Mallory. The kids at Richland want RFID lanyards. So, you know, that's something coming around to a lot of student concern. So I thought that was interesting, since we just brought that up.
So I would, since this is Ron's discussion, I would be in favor of rolling it to the next meeting, because again, I'm not quite sure what
I would, too.
I, I'm not sure where he was going with this, or, so I would, I would prefer to have him here, because this is his topic.
He was interested in moving it forward.
Yeah, exactly. So I just, I think that it's probably best if we have him here, so he can give us his
At least get us started on where he was going, because I, I'm not even sure where to start.
Yeah, there's
Okay, that sounds good. And then, you know, Ron's got some initial information. He can answer questions, and then we can take whatever direction you're, the board's wanting us to go and go do some more work on it after that. But, so we'll be ready to, are, are you here, Ron, at that October? I know you've got a conference, so just checking. It's our next meeting, board's next meeting is October 11th.
I will not be here until we present the board.
So what I will then do is, prior to that, I'll get some just initial information from you, enough that maybe I can answer a question. And then we'll still get the feedback from the board, and then we can work on it when you get back. All right.
Maybe, maybe Ron Mayberry could interface with Ron Cohn and give him any questions or anything, too. That might help.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you very much. We'll roll that one forward. So we don't have any unfinished business. So next up is new business. So we have policy 3113 for students, part-time, home-based students or off-campus students. Ms. Sinclair.
Yeah, second. I'm in the wrong place. Here we go.
Okay, I am bringing a policy update to the board tonight. This is about our part-time and home-based, off-campus students. So just making it clear on policy about what they can participate in at the school and the ancillary services. This wording is just updates with WASDAM model language.
Do you want to have any questions, comments, concerns?
Seems pretty, pretty logical.
Perfect. If no questions or comments, I will call for a motion. Entertain a motion, I should say.
I move to approve policy 3113, part-time, home-based students or off-campus students as written for first and second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, but first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, I will call for the real call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sundby?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, next is policy 3232 for students, excuse me, Parents and Students Rights in Administration of Surveys, Analysis, and Evaluations. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, this is a, a brand-new policy. It is based on a WASDAM model policy. We currently do not have policy language making it clear what our practice is. And that is that parents have the right to review surveys, to approve whether or not their students are participating in any kind of research, and also the right to review curricular materials and instructional materials. So like I said, this is pretty much verbatim, a WASDAM model policy. We do have surveys coming up, right? The Healthy Youth Survey. We have our annual district survey. There are other types of survey opportunities throughout the year. So this just brings policy language and clarity to what parent and student's rights are when being asked to participate in surveys, analysis, or evaluations, or in other words, any kind of like research.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns?
Dr. Pierce, does it, so does this, this policy, is this the place or not the place where it would discuss, like, notification of those surveys? Because like I know with the Healthy Student Survey that's coming up, OSPI says you have to have two-week, like, notification prior to the administration of the survey. So is, is that something that would go in a policy like this? Or is there going to be a procedure that goes along with this? Or would that go in something completely different?
There, there will be a procedure. There is a WASDAM model procedure. And I will, it's drafted. I need to double-check to see if it provides like a timeframe. It does, like, the policy says prior, where is it? Right here. I just had my eyes on it. Prior written consent, right? But it doesn't say like a timeframe.
Yeah, because I think the, sorry, go ahead.
But some, you're right. I mean, there could be, there might be some surveys, like you're saying, that Healthy Youth Survey, where there's sort of a directive around the timeframe.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's two weeks. That's, that's why I was wondering if there's a policy that'll have, like, the information on notifications, how to opt-out, like those kind of things for, so they know how to do all that.
Yeah, and, yeah, yeah. I, I, it's going to depend probably on the, like, I don't know if the procedure will say two weeks applies to everything, because it, it may not.
Right. But whatever wants to have a timeframe, there, there'll be something in there that says this, this is how, how you'll get notified or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, that's really my question, is around the procedures of it. And I know that that's the next, that's the next step. So I guess that's just waiting to, to know how the procedure of this happens, right?
So if, if the board, you know, passes the, the policy, I can run the procedures by you two, in case you have any questions.
For this one, I would appreciate that, yeah. So most of them, I don't know if it's necessary, but this is a pretty important one.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I ask about the survey? It's not the specific policy, but the health survey that's coming up. But can I ask about that? Is that?
Why don't, why don't we finish this first, and if you want to
Okay.
Bring that up. Let's, we'll get this out of the way.
Yep.
If that's all right. Okay, so anyway, any other questions regarding 3232? If not, I will entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve policy 3232, Parents and Students Rights in Administration of Surveys, Analysis, or Evaluations as written for first and second reading.
I'll second it.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the real call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sundby?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, Gabe, you have a question?
I, I just wanted to clarify the Healthy Youth Survey that's coming up. So, because I've had a couple of questions about it. So one, we, we are not asking the sexual behavior or sexual violence questions. We've been exempted from that, correct?
That's correct. We wrote a letter requesting exemption, and that exemption was granted.
And then we've opted out of the gender identity questions as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate that.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is our next meeting agenda. We have an enrollment update. We have the capital projects update, capital budget, student safety, and I put on there the RFID discussion. Anything else?
Well, we will also need to look at the information that came from WASDAM that comes, and then discuss that before it goes to annual conference, which is in November.
Okay. So what are we going to write, what are we going to call that? Tracy, sorry.
Whatever you can say.
Sorry.
Do we know when that's going to come out, that WASDAM?
It was supposed to come out yesterday, and as of 3:30, quarter to four, it still wasn't out today.
Wait, but it should be out before October 11?
It should be, I would hope it would be out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I even went on the WASDAM website and looked in it, so it wasn't there.
Great. All right. Gabe, Mike, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Perfect. All right. With that, I think we have wrapped it all up. I will thank everyone for their time. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.